It's four thirty-two, I will call the meeting to order, can we please start with the roll call?
Absolutely, President Abbas.
Present.
Vice President Martin is running late, Alders, Carter and Bennett are excused from tonight's meeting, Alder McKinney.
Present.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Lemmer.
Here.
And Alder Weheli.
Here.
Alright.
Thank you very much, Stephen, can you please do IT announcement?
Welcome to our virtual meeting, if you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members of the committee, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please keep, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration while you're speaking. In this meeting, panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Panelists also have the ability to add pronouns after their names if they choose. Please do not alter the current naming convention, simply a text after your name. Please use the raised hand feature if you'd like to be recognized to speak or ask questions. Staff, please use the raised hand feature if you'd like to, if you'd like to be recognized to speak. The Chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Luring your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public, we do not have any members of the public who are registered to speak. So, President Abbas, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. With that, we will go with the approval of the minutes, can I please have a motion?
So move.
Move, can I have a second please? Second bell, thank you. Next is public comment, Matlin, I don't see any public comment, any person, Mr. Public Comment, correct?
Correct, we do not have any registrants.
Alright, next is disclosures and recusals. Any member of the committee, if they wish to disclose or refuse, that's their opportunity. I do not see any hand raise. And before we move to agenda items, just two things I will quickly say that. I'll welcome Alder Lemmer after your injury, it's good to see you back, I hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
And we have five members of CCC right here, if any member leave, we don't have any quorum. Alder, Vice President Martin is running late, so once she's come, then we have a little bit flexibility. So any member wish to leave, please raise your hand and let us know. With that, Alder Martin, Vice President Martin is going to give us an update on President's work group. As she's running late, we will move forward, table that and move forward to update item of President's work group on racial justice, anti-racism and equity, which is Agenda Item Number Three, Legislative File Number Six Eight Zero Five Five. Alder Weheli.
Thank you, and I apologize, I am having my camera off because my internet is really goofy, so I apologize in advance. So, the President's Work Group on Racial Justice, Anti-Racism and Equity. We were charged with, to provide the Council Policy Recommendation on Participatory Budgeting and Creating a Framework for All the Boards, Commissions and Committees Around Anti-Racism, Equity and Inclusion Training. So, we decided as a committee to take one initiative after another, instead of mixing the two initiatives together. So, we are focusing between now and end of December, the participatory budget. So, what I'll do is, I'll just give you an overview of what participatory budget is and who we, how did our meeting went and what we learned so far. So, participatory budgeting is a broad range of approaches to increase resident and community input in various aspects of municipal budget. In the convention budget process, residents engage through attendance at Finance Committee, Common Council Meeting, as well as contracting, contacting the mayors and elders or through the Neighborhood Resource Team. In participatory budget project, residents are provided with entry point at all stages of the budget process and are able to make decisions or provide guidance in which city provides, projects are funded. Participatory Budget, or call as PB, initiatives are very widely in amount of decision-making control that's given to community members in the amount of money that's allocated to the participatory budget project. So, just, you know, and this is an attachment meeting, so you can, you can see what the participatory budget is. The goal is actually to include increased transparency in how public fundings or funds are allocated, opportunities to educate and engage residents, particularly residents who are not engaged in the traditional budget process. In the democratic process, increased effectiveness and municipal funding and increased community control over municipal resources or cities, particularly among historically marginalized communities, Black, Indigenous and people of color communities. In practical way, PB projects have had very various degrees of success and varying degrees of impact. In the United States where PB was first initiated in twenty twenty, the project has been in existence since nineteen eighty-nine and it was started in Brazil. So, just to give you a little bit of how it's done, normally, you know, what they do is information session for the communities, they collect ideas, you know, how they want to budget some projects and then they have a budget delegate, you know, a small group of people who are involved in this and then they have voting. So, when we did the participatory budget, Karen did a very amazing job in doing the research in how other cities are doing the participatory budget. So, we identified two particular cities, which is Seattle and Durham. And, you know, and you can go back and listen to some of our meetings, it was so profound to hear from older member Tammy Morales from Seattle and Andrew Holland from Durham. In both cases, Seattle is in early stage in participatory budget. They have allocated over two hundred, two twenty-eight million for participatory budget. It's still in initiation, but what was so profound to hear from Andrew is the Durham, which was in September twentieth, if you want to go back and listen to this meeting. So, you know, we are trying to have some recommendation by the end of this year in term of what that project looks like, what this initiative look like and we are trying to involve our communities of color. So, we have sent some invite to our communities of color to participate in our upcoming November first meeting, which is next Tuesday, next Monday. So, in that regard, you know, what we'll do is just talk a little bit about how the city funds its communities or nonprofit and then compare how the participatory budget is done. So, they will have a framework of the city budget process and then they will look at the Durham and Seattle and then finally, at the end of the year, when we make recommendation, hopefully, we will have a larger community engagement focus group in term of how we want to move forward for the next steps. So, if you have any questions, let me know, otherwise, please go to the various meetings that we had. We are grateful to the DCR, the Department of Civil Rights have been really helpful in term of how they can help us and how we can be able to use the lens of social justice and equity throughout this process. Any questions?
Thanks, Alder Weheli, for the detailed update, any question for the Chair? I do not see any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perfect, we will move forward to discussion item, Agenda Item Number Four, Legislative File Number Six Seven Three Eight Six, Racial Analysis Purposes and Practices. Tariq, is that, yeah?
Evening folks. I can't know everybody here, but just for the sake, sake of the recording, we're being recorded. Tariq Sokov, he had from Department of Civil Rights. So, also here, Norm and Christie, y'all want to say hi too?
Good evening, everybody, Norm Davis, Civil Rights.
Hey, everyone, good to see you all, my name is Christie Kumar, I use she/her's pronouns and serve in Equity and Social Justice Division, good to be with you.
So, tonight, we're really just going to go through a high-level overview of the Racial Equity and Social Justice Initiative, very, very briefly, and then really just talk about racial equity analysis, again, from that big picture of what does that mean? What's it for? And then talking a little bit about how, as Alders, maybe you can best, best use it. And ideally, after that, getting into a little bit of a discussion, a conversation about what does, what does it mean, how can the department best support all of you in the work that you want to do and bring the analysis to bear in different projects that we're working on. So, it's assuming redundant for some of you, but again, Racial Equity and Social Justice Initiative is, I find, as we're kind of in this period of transition, that I'm going back to that refrain, a lot of times, when, when all else fails, go back to the mission. And the mission of the initiative of RESJI is really to embed racial equity and social justice as core principles in everything we do. That's the work. So, it's really, it's about culture change, it's about changing how we do what we do and it's about getting, getting that to spread, as opposed to being the, the actual doers. So, so, we've got a few different teams, we've got now, and most importantly, we now have a formalized staff. So, my position has been created where, or kind of combined, where I'm now coordinating the Neighborhood Resource Teams that have existed for a long time, but those are together now with the Racial Equity and Social Justice Initiative, so coordinating both of those under the Equity and Social Justice Division. Christie is the manager for that division and then we've got another program specialist in that division as well. And then there's also the Disability Rights Program, Language Access Program, and we'll be expanding into more around Title VI and Environmental Justice. But that's where the initiative is housed. So, now we've got three people really actively staffing the initiative, which is a growth from one before and then where we were kind of operating without for a little while. And then we've got a series of action teams. We've got one that focuses on tools and training, really, how, how we learn, how do we develop this stuff? We've got one that focuses on community connections, which talks about how do we engage in public participation? What does that work look like? We've got one that focuses on communications. And then we are developing, we used to have a data team, we're going back to that. So, we're in the process of developing our data and impact team. We've got newly emerging, something that we're calling a care team, which is really out there to support people as we're in this work, what does that look like when, when we need that? We've got a core group that comes together where we share information. And then we also have something called Strategy Team, which brings together the co-leads of all those different teams along with department and division heads and really thinks about kind of actively, again, how do we get, how do we embody that mission? How do we get this work to come alive in all different department and divisions? Those are the action teams. And then the thing that I'm kind of most excited about right now that we're working on is something called Department Equity Teams. So, this is where every single work unit in the city of Madison, every department, division is being tasked with now. Folks might be familiar with the Civil Rights Coordinators that used to exist. So, we're bringing Civil Rights Coordinators together with Department Equity Teams. Department Equity Teams are going to be taking on the roles of the Civil Rights Coordinators along with a more expansive role of really thinking about how do they become the ones spearheading racial equity analysis? Making sure that they're thinking about how, again, going back to the mission, do they really embed racial equity and social justice within their departments and divisions? And so, these Department Equity Teams are really becoming these engines of transformation to change, division by division, what we do and how we do it. So, that's the big overview of RESJI and different pieces of how it's, how it's operating. When the most significant things that has come out of RESJI is both practically the, the tools of racial equity analysis as well as the concept. So, we, that shows up in a lot of different ways and that can get confusing. If any of you are looking at your agendas right now, you'll see a series of questions, which basically encapsulates racial equity analysis in a tiny little nutshell. Talks about who's burdened, who's benefited? How do we mitigate unintended consequences? Who's at the table, what voices are we looking, looking, looking to? That's one aspect, that's one angle. But the tools that were developed through the initiative were really the comprehensive version and the fast-track version. We're working on refining those and making some changes to those, probably going to a place where we only have one analysis tool, so that it's not fast-track or comprehensive, but that there's just going to be one tool that people use. But it really is going to be going back to those same bottom-line questions. Who does this work for? Who does this not work for? Where is it potentially backfiring? What are the things that we're not paying attention to that we should be? The things that we didn't attend to, the things that we didn't see? How are we tuning into community voice in this process? It's really a way that we open our eyes and do things mindfully and intentionally. And that's more than anything what a racial equity analysis is. It forces a conversation that centers on race that otherwise would not happen. That's it. Two other ways in which racial equity analysis is showing up is what you all are hard at work on right now, which is the budget. We introduced a series of questions into the budget this year, both on the capital end and the operating end, to take people through, again, a series of those like, who is this working for, who is this not working for, how is this grounded? What are the unintended consequences, what are you doing to mitigate those? How is this grounded in community voice or responsive to that in any way? All those questions were in the budget and part of what people, people had to answer. Norm has been working with the City Attorney, Mike Haas, on developing an equity note, which again, going to come down to those same basic questions, but is going to be something that we're going to be looking to attach to legislation. So, there are all these different places where racial equity analysis is being done via different tools and that can get very, very confusing and overwhelming. The bottom line is, we're putting it in all these different places as checks to make sure that as much as possible, we can force this conversation to happen. And again, that's what racial equity analysis is really about. It's about having a mindful, intentional conversation that centers race and thinks about who is this working for and who are we leaving out in this process? Then there's this last part, that doesn't exist via a tool, but it's really very much how I think about Neighborhood Resource Teams. And I think about it also as a way in which your legislation can show up. And that's the idea of real-time racial equity analysis. So, we can think about racial equity analysis having, happening on a page and being written out via a report. But again, if racial equity analysis is really there to force a conversation, that's what we do at Neighborhood Resource Teams. Every single time, we are thinking about who are these policies, these programs working for? Who are they not working for? Who are we leaving out? What has the community had to say about this? How are we factoring that in? And that same kind, those same kinds of questions can be part of the debate. And that's part of what we really want to emphasize, that there's this place where like, yes, we need to look to racial equity now, like encourage racial equity analyses to formally be done and look at what came out of them. But there's also the way, and this showed up so well, I think, even though it was kind of, it was a little messy with the allied park and looking at the potential to have an alcohol-free park in allied. There was really robust debate that happened at the council, all hinging on what has the community said, how does this show up? Really thinking about it from all those different angles. And that debate was rich from the standpoint of really being grounded. And who is this working for, what have people said, what are the unintended accounts, unintended consequences? And that was a place where we really saw it working. And even if we backtrack now, the instruction given a few months before was to go back and do a racial equity analysis on that whole proposal to begin with. And instead, what we saw is that this is a project that had been done with Community and Neighborhood Resource Team for a long time. And so, even though it was one where the, the inclination was to go, go do a racial equity analysis, it didn't actually fit in that way and there were more nuanced ways that we're able to dive into that, that same kind of topic. So, those are all the different ways in which this, this stuff can show up. You know, I, I think that there's been, I don't think that we've done our best to, to set you all up to be able to use some of these tools as well as you could. And I think that sometimes there's too much of a focus on kind of yes/no questions. Was an analysis done, was an analysis not done? And looking to the analysis as kind of the, not with any kind of poor intention here, but like, that that tells us the story, it can kind of become a checkbox. While the racial equity analysis is done, so we're good to go on the project. And remember, all the racial equity analysis is doing is forcing a conversation. Think what we need to make sure happens, whether it's with the Boards, Committees, Commissions, whether it's internally with staff, but is really thinking about asking the questions from the standpoint of, alright, well, what is it that came out of the racial equity analysis? What did you all learn? What did you do differently as a result of this? Are there things that you learned along in the process that make you think that we need to change this project or this program in some way? And then all of those same things, all those same considerations can become part of the, the discussion, the debate for every, you know, whether it's the council, whether it's different committees, wherever. The answers to those questions and what people kind of took out, each of the committee members took out from reading through the analysis can become fodder for the next stage. So that the racial equity analysis just becomes that first stage and whoever's encountering it is really taking the baton and running it to the next level and thinking about like, okay, so now, how do we take it and bring this discussion, this conversation that centers race and inclusion and social justice that much more to life? So, I think that there are some ways that we need to shift thinking about what do we do once a racial equity analysis is done and just thinking about that as the first part of the process. And the next parts really being, how do you kind of pull out some of those, the most significant pieces of the analysis? And then thinking about how you include that in your own deliberations. So, I'm going to stop there, Christie and Norm, not sure if you all want to jump in with anything you'd want to add or kind of frame some questions to the committee members?
Yeah, thank you for that, Tarek. Yeah, I really appreciate that, that, that in-depth overview and we're all, you know, certainly on the same page in terms of how we, how we view racial equity and how it comes to life in the city and how we can best equip you as policymakers in your role. You know, there's the staff role that Tarek talked about, the different teams. But then you have, you have a role as policymakers. And certainly, it's, you know, it includes, you know, those questions about was an analysis done? You know, what, what level of analysis was done? But we really want to strongly suggest that as you consider not only the analysis, but you're considering what came out of it and what, what the discussion was like, what questions were asked and what answers were put forth. Those are the nuggets that will actually change the course of legislation or a process or policy. And, you know, we've, we've, we've said for a long time that there's, there are different levels at which analyses can be done. Some of the most impactful are at the system, at the system level. We can, we can look project by project, you know, on, you know, different, different projects, but it's the, it's those systematic changes. You know, back when the initiative started, I mean, Tarek was right there at the very beginning when the initiative started. And there was, there was, there was, I don't want to say a flurry, but you know, there were, there was lots and lots of data that was, that was circulating at that time. And it, it all pointed to systemic issues. And, and the desire was to, you know, get in there and see, figure out how we can sort of deconstruct all of these, the system, this, these systemic issues that are producing these, these huge disparities in our community. And so, I don't want us to lose sight of that, that systemic piece. You know, oftentimes, we, we sort of, you know, it's this project, it's this project. But sometimes projects are, for lack of a better term, you know, under an umbrella process or under an umbrella system. And I think that forcing that conversation back to the system level will help us retool and produce more equitable results.
Yeah, I won't add much, I think my colleagues did an excellent job and happy to kind of dive in if there's more of a question section. But I think one thing I'd want to just underscore is, we have to be vigilant around our focus on impact. Right, sometimes we can get really conceptual with, with racial equity because it's a conceptual process. But I think always bringing it back to how much are we doing? How well did we do it? And is anyone better off? Right? And so, I think bringing back that community impact, like, that's a really simple question we can ask ourselves, like, even as we evaluate. Tarek mentioned a step one is an analysis, there's always possibility for iteration on an analysis. So, if we send something through a tool and we said nothing changed, we have to doubt the efficacy of the work we put in, right? Because there's always ways, ways to make our programs, policies and procedures a little bit more equitable every time we, we ask these questions. And so, I just want to underscore that, that piece around impact for, for community members.
Thank you very much, Norm, Christie and Tarek, really appreciate for being here today. I know many Alders have expressed to council staff about questions around RSHI and how it works. I have one question, Norm, you, you were. I have one question, Norm, you, you were spot on. And then I will go to Alder Vehley about systematic change. Project by project is important, but system overall. So I noticed during the finance, each department have racial equity analysis, how it's impacted the communities, and there were questions. My question is, so from staff point of view or city operational point of view, we enter all those details, how this will not impact. Once that is done, budget is approved, how could we measure? How could we get the data either? Does that impact was really an impact? Did they really impact those community? So what mechanism is there to really help us as accountable what we are putting in the paper? Does that make sense, my question?
Yeah, if I can restate your question back to you. How, how can you determine what the impact was of the, the budget items that, that have been, that have been approved? Or, or the, the racial equity impact for the budget items that were approved? You know, I think that's, I think that's a, that's a great question. And I think that it's, it goes back to establishing those metrics. And that's, that's something that I identify needs, needs some real development. You know, especially within agencies as agencies are taking the lead on conducting their own equity analyses. What's, what's that measure and how do we, how do we circle back? You know, DCR, DCR doesn't provide that checks and balance for agencies. When they conduct an analysis, we're not going in and sort of evaluating each, each analysis and the outcomes. But, you know, we are in the phase of updating our tools and updating our training and learning spaces. And so I think that, that metrics is, is a key piece. And I've actually been communicating with some folks on our data governance team about how we can, how we can establish, establish more metrics.
Thank you, Norm, Alder Vehley and after Alder Vehley, Alder Heck.
Thank you, President Abbas. Thank you, Norm, Tarek and Kristi. This is really a great presentation. My point is, at the council, we always have someone referring the agenda item to resgi analysis. Can you walk us through the process in term of what is, what's the process? What's the timeline? Who is actually doing the work in term of the, the, the analysis? And what's the turnaround? Thank you.
Since no other mics went on, I'll go. Maybe you did, Norm. You know, I, I think that's one of the things that we're still sorting out a little bit is developing some cohesion around that. But that's where I think department equity teams are going to become pretty significant. What I think we want to be able to do is to have those bodies that it makes the most sense for kind of take charge of the project. Because again, we don't want to make this about those three people, Kristi, Donna Collingwood and myself, who live in that division, being the ones that do all of this. This is really about getting everybody to be able to do it. And so when racial equity analysis is going to be asked for, I think it's going to go to the respective department or division that kind of owns that project. Or in some cases, it's probably going to come to the council office where council staff is going to take lead on pulling together an analysis. And then the idea is someone is appointed kind of the, the, the lead facilitator. They start to pull together a team that's ideally pulling together a diverse group of folks from different departments, different skill sets, different mind, mentalities. And then they, you know, set out over the course of the next month or so, sometimes a couple of months, a series of meetings to go through the analysis. Sometimes that's going to include folks that don't work for the city in different capacities. Sometimes it might just be city folks. So that's the, that's the way it's going to work. But I'd also go back and, you know, I, I think one of the things that we wanted to make sure comes out of this presentation today is really think about two things. One, what is it that's really prompting someone to ask for an analysis to be done? And then does it take a formal analysis to have that conversation? Because a lot of times there might be the desire to, well, we want to look at this item and really dig into, you know, dig, dig into all the aspects around inclusion and, and who is it working for? Who is it not working for? All the, all the questions that we ask. But remember, that doesn't always take a formal racial equity analysis. That is deliberation that can happen, I think, with the council members themselves and often does. I think the other part is when an analysis comes to you all, really making sure, and this is going to require staff to be present or the department, division head to be able to speak to all of this. But really making sure that you're pulling out that information about, so what was it that is significant that came out of this analysis? So really make it not about analysis being done or not done. But what does that tell us? What does that mean for us in terms of how we actually apply this project or this program? So much of this is about the how, not, not, not the what. You know, so even, I mean, President Abbas, to your question about the data, sometimes it's about like, does the project go in? Is it the right project? But sometimes the difference between, it's not if the project gets done or not, it's how that particular project shows up. And that's really, I think, where we want to get to with all of this stuff. How do we do this in the best way possible? And that's, that's where I think that there's a lot of opportunity, even for you as Alders and the committee members, when they're involved, to put forth amendments. You know, to be able to say, okay, this is a good project. We would prefer it if you did it in, or kept this aspect in mind as you did it. We want to put forth this recommendation to, to kind of change the trajectory a little bit, to pull forth a recommendation from the analysis. So there are lots of ways, I think, to bring it to life a little bit more. So I know that's a lot more than you asked for, Alder Vehley, but.
Alder Vehley, do you have follow-up question?
Yes, yes. Thanks, Tarek. Sometimes, you know, we have project that's coming forth to the floor of the council with the time sensitive. And we are in, in a position not to have resgi analysis because it will delay the project. So I, I just want to know what's the timeline when an item is referred for the resgi versus when it comes back to the council?
Or I could rephrase that question, Tarek. When you guys start a RSGI analysis, how long it took on the staff time to finish analysis?
You know, they take some time. They take some time. I mean, it's usually a few weeks at least. Is the reality. And sometimes they take closer to a month or even a little bit more to pull a group of people together regularly. So yeah, it, it takes some turnaround. I don't know, Kristi or Norm, if you add anything to that. But the, the one other piece I'd say to that too is, one thing about the racial equity analysis, also asking that question of staff, how have you incorporated racial equity into your process so far? How have you incorporated the principles of racial equity analysis into this so far? Because you might find out that the staff actually did a lot to really, even though they didn't do a formal racial equity analysis, they were using those questions and thinking about it and how they kind of incorporated into that, into all, all those pieces. Or how they incorporated all those pieces into the project. And so especially when there's a quick turnaround, you might find that the necessity for an actual analysis to go, go and be done again might end up being redundant because they've already done the work. They just didn't do it in that way exactly.
Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thanks, President Abbas. Some of my questions, and actually Tarek answered really well in the last five minutes or so. But I, I first just wanted to thank all three of you for the great information you provided. It's really helpful. I, I, I originally raised my hand because I, I was struggling with, I think, some of what Tarek was talking about. I feel like sometimes Alders and, and perhaps staff to have the impression that you can push the resji analysis button and out the other end comes yes, no, this was an equitable thing to do. And I mean, I think you're doing a great job of explaining that is not what this is for. And, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is this is really about examining the processes that, that were used to get to perhaps a policy recommendation or, or, or something the city is doing otherwise. To me, that makes sense. You're, you're really wanting to know, you, you want to critique the process with respect to racial equity and social justice. And it, it, it's not really providing an answer, yes or no, was this equitable? And to me, like, like you just mentioned, in a perfect world, this would, these mini analyses would be happening throughout every process. It wouldn't even be an analysis. It's just that discussion must always happen. And there's no need for a, a, something at the end of the, of the chain or the decision-making. Do I kind of have that right if, if it were a perfect world? And I just, I, I was struggling at first, I guess, about what happens towards the end of a process and, and what information is really being provided? If that makes sense.
Yeah, I'll chime in. Yeah, absolutely. That's the, that's the, that's the, the message I think that we're trying to, to share today. And as, as early in the process is, is good. But really at any, at any point, identifying what was, what was done and what came out of it. You know, as you as, as policymakers, really leveraging your role to hold that accountability to say, you know, what, what, what equitable, what racially equitable solutions came out of this? And what did you incorporate into, you know, this final proposal? And then you deciding if that's enough or asking more questions or, you know, something else. And, and, and again, I'll just, I'll just point back to the, like the larger systems issue. Much of, you know, much of what we do or, or that we enact is derived from some existing process, some existing policy, whether it's housing, whether it's contracting. You know, there, there are these existing processes and systems that we operate in. Sometimes it's, it's not that live issue so much as the larger, the larger systems piece. When it, when it's a live issue, there are those time pressures. And it's, you know, unfortunately, you know, our values sometimes can suffer at, at the, at the hands of, at the hands of time pressure. But if we look to the larger system that's producing that, that project and try to, try to cast the die or tool in racial equity in the overall, in the umbrella process, then that can help us, you know, skirt some of those, those time pressure issues down the road.
Thanks. I, I appreciate that, Norm. And I think I'll, I'll just end by saying, I think for the next years, I'll continue to learn about this and I think that might be a good thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Heck. Alder McKinney.
Thank you very much. And much of what I was thinking has already been said. And I am really appreciative of this presentation. What stuck out to me was the community impact and what change did it make or did not make? And I always had the sense that we were missing, missing something. I was so excited when I first came on as Alder in 2015. It's like, oh, you know, this tool will be applied. But what I found it was applied toward the end after all of the mechanisms, all the decisions, all the processes had been in place. And then we, we apply the, the tool. And I'm very clear that that is not where it should land at the end. And I was glad that you said that in each department, it would be embedded in the department is to answer these questions, not at the end, but throughout the process to really continually evaluate the process. And I hear process a lot, a lot. But I want to apply it here is because those questions should be, should be embedded in everything and everything that each department head is doing. And so, so I'm, I'm really glad that this presentation happened. I'm not sure, President Abbas, are we at a point where we will be presenting something like this or having this presented to the council? The first question. And then the second is, is that will we continue to learn ourselves more about how the, the tool is, is working and how those measurable instruments are applied?
I can answer question number one. And Tarek or Norm, you can answer question number two. So, so regarding the council, I'm trying really hard to keep the council agenda really balanced. The meetings, as you all know, go on average around midnight. Happy my try was to bring those discussion at CCEC and invitation was sent to all Alders and that it's also recorded. But if the will of the body is to also share those good work and have that discussion in a council floor, that can be done. Keeping in mind, we will look at the agenda item in next month and do and see where we can fit in. That could be absolutely done if the will of the body is to really bring it to the common council floor. That direction is fine with me too. But just keeping in mind, the agenda item on council floor is really heavy. I'm trying really hard to balance it. So that's why prefer to have in CCEC, but up to the body.
So the one additional question is, is that designing these series of discussions and informations at the, as CCEC might be a, a good place for it. Because, and so that would encourage Alders to, you know, to, to dial in. It's an important conversation and information. And I know, I don't know how we encourage Alders to come and, and participate in. And so that's something that, you know, further discussion needs to happen around.
Thank you, Alder McKinney. Any further discussion? Question, comments, sorry, Kristi?
Yeah, and I just, you know, I don't, I don't know if you all do this, Madeline, but even if, if the recording can be sent out with the highlight of the, like, this is the time that this discussion happened, I think that was part of what we were also hoping is that we can have this, this conversation here. And then there's, I know there's going to be another conversation, more digging into some of the considerations around equity and the budget and what does that look like at the President's Work Group on Anti-Racism? But if each of those could be sent out to just kind of further, further it's even so for the Alders that aren't able to be here, might be able to have a second chance at it.
That's our intent and I see Matt on phase two and that phase is my phase two. Yes, that is the intent. Absolutely happy to, that's our plan to share and encourage Alders to watch, read you and also attend if they cannot attend CCEs.
Alder McKinney also asked about some continued learning. Right? Could you remind me of your question on that front, Alder McKinney?
And so this is, this is a presentation that happened on this day and this time. It's like, is there a commitment? And Alder Heck said something about it and learning and continuing to learn. I mean, this is complex. I mean, there is no one-off answer. And as we are holding departments and our decision-making process accountable to make sure that equity lens is there, it is really important that we continue to educate ourselves around what this is, what this looks like, so that, you know, we know what we're looking for. And then to begin encouraging our colleagues around those issues. So that's what I meant about ongoing, continuous education.
Yeah, and, you know, we do lots of presentations and so on. But experience is really what does, what does so much to change all of us. And so we can come back, have other conversations here and in other bodies. But there's a lot that happens in Neighborhood Resource Team meetings. And those of you that have Neighborhood Resource Teams in your particular areas, I know many of you come, but you're invited. And so being, being there and part of those conversations can build that muscle. I think we have our core team meeting that meets once every other month. Perhaps it'll be called Equity in the Loop Group one day. Loop Group sounds kind of funny. But coming out to that group, I think, would be a really positive and being able to, again, exercise the muscle, getting a better sense of all the different things that are going on. And really remembering the point of all of this, the point of all of this is how do we be equitable? How do we be inclusive? How do we be just? And that's not necessarily about analysis, it's about a way of being, it's about a way of doing. And so how do we shift all of that and actually show up, each of us in our respective lanes differently? And that we can, that's a living process that we can keep on doing.
I have a final follow-up question, if I can, is that you mentioned the, I want to say I O P, but that's something, the resources that that happen in each community. And those are normally the Neighborhood Resource Teams that activate in each of the communities. They're during the, they're during the day. Is there a consideration that that's not the best time to have these team meetings? Because what it does, it happens during the day and it's for those individuals who have the flexibility, you know, to attend these daytime meetings. And are they actually meeting the needs within the community? So that ends my questions.
Yeah, and I know Christie wanted to jump in here too, so I'll say this piece and then hand it off to her. Yeah, you know, that's a question that comes up all the time. And we've, we've looked at it and thought of it in different ways. And I don't know that there is a best time. There are different times and as always, there are different folks that are going to be able to attend in different ways. So we only have one team that meets a little bit later, that's the allied team. But even that team ended up scooching earlier and earlier into the workday because that was, now it meets at four as opposed to what was existing for a while where it was meeting at 5:30. Because it seemed like that worked for a large number of people that wanted to happen there. One shift that we are looking at, however, that I am particularly excited about with the Neighborhood Resource Teams, and this is one of the things that we've learned from COVID and just Zoom, is that Zoom made things easier for some people, some staff, to be able to get to the meetings, particularly folks from schools and other entities that weren't able to get away from their respective bodies. So what we are looking at doing is continuing with Neighborhood Resource Teams probably via Zoom. And instead of kind of doing a hybrid or something on a semi-regular basis, getting out into the community. So we do two months on Zoom and then the third month, perhaps, going out and doing a meeting that was really geared, that meeting, gathering, what have you, geared that much more towards residents in the evening with a meal. And so looking at what kind of canvas that can that lay for us to having a different type of way of engaging with the respective communities and we'll see what happens. But really excited about that and the potential to be getting out there in a very different way four times a year or so. And I think that's going to provide a really ripe opportunity for all the alders to connect in a different way too.
Yeah, I was just going to add something that, and I think it's been highlighted, but I just wanted to double highlight it. And it's that equity work can often, and I fall under this, like any of my colleagues with degrees in here, can often be hyper-intellectualized. It can actually be easier to intellectualize the process by attending a training with modules and theories and systems of practice. I love it. I love doing that kind of nerdy equity stuff. But actually, that muscle that Tariq is talking about is developed through action. And it is so much better to develop that muscle when you're talking about real people, real scarcity mindsets or abundant mindsets, real budgets and real constituents, right? As opposed to the community space. And so I urge us to think about how can we get into more spaces where we're like practicing that muscle? And all the items that Tariq mentioned are open for you to attend real time, like energy meetings, protein meetings. We want you there, we want you in the breakout rooms where we're actually grappling with this stuff, where there is no right answer. Right? Actually, so much of this work happens in those small breakout rooms where we're thinking, what can we do? That goes beyond an hour and a half, like bias training, which is good too. And we should just attend those. So just that invitation to continue to practice is going to be very important. And then just, you know, we are at the same, at the same time, developing our training and routine and action team within racial equity. Just as we have new leadership on board, we're really excited to expand our offerings. And so, you know, maybe there's some time to think with you all of like what a session you all would look like. So we're meeting kind of both pieces of in practice, in action, as well as a practice day. So we're excited to be in conversation with you all around this practice.
Thank you very much. I will say thanks to Norm, Christie and Tariq. Really appreciate for being here and sharing information. I'm sure we will hear from you guys again. Thank you. With that, before we move to next agenda item, new business, let's quickly, Vice President Martin is here. Could we please get an updated agenda item number two? Let's let it slide, six eight zero five four. A President Work Group Review and revise the Chief of Staff Position Description. Vice President Martin.
Yes, thank you, President. Thank you for moving us until I could get back home. The committee has completed our work. And I will also say if there are other alders who want to kind of chime in on, on, on something I may have missed, please feel free after I'm done. Excuse me. So we have come up with recommendations for Chief of Staff Position Description Updates, a position description for the Community Engagement Specialist, as well as compensation group and salary ranges for both, as well as working on, like training and experience that they both will need. We, as you can see in the item, that there's a memo from Tori that has been added to Ledge Star. We wanted to, the first thing that we looked at was the percentages and we weren't, we didn't quite agree that the percentages of the COS description as it was before we came in were like right for the position. Before, it was mostly policy development and analysis. And we thought that that should be reduced and more attention and more focus be on that, for that person to be spent on management of the office and of staff and being strategic in that. We also have another category that we added to the job description from, that came from the TFOGS recommendations. And to add a section within that job description that basically is oversight over BCCs and the whole process. And then a little bit as well for council office communications. So we did change the percentages a bit and add a new kind of like area of work. So for the Community Engagement Specialist, again, we were going back to a lot of the recommendations that the TFOGS report gave us, as well as working on what we did previously or what the Work Group on Communications work that was done, I think finished up last year or the year before, and came up with the fact that we do need a Community Engagement Specialist that will be within the Common Council Office under the supervision of the COS. We spent actually quite a bit of time thinking about what the purview of and what we meant by communication and how all of that would go. So basically, this is someone who would end up working to kind of identify the needs for communication and making sure that we are engaging with our constituents and the public at large widely. And with, you know, obviously making sure that we prioritize reaching out to communities that are not usually reached out to or underrepresented. So this is going to be a huge chunk of this position. We also have some time, less time, like substantially smaller. So that was 60%. We've got 15% of the time developing and implementing communications in terms of, you know, print, does something need to go to the newspapers? Does something, you know, need to go out in the mail? As well as electronics, so emails, social media, et cetera. As well as like coming up with strategies to engage more of the public that we haven't necessarily reached at this point in time. And then implementing all of these strategies. So there are, we still do have a little bit of time, about 15% for this person to work with the Chief of Staff to work on the BCC duties. With the idea that the BCCs, you know, require communication in order to get new members as well as, you know, put out information regarding the works, the works that they've done. And then we kind of have a 10% catch-all. We also are aware that this might not be the final and that since this is a new position, that we'll need to be flexible and will, and maybe needs will change as we go on. Excuse me. Next up, we have the recommendation for the Chief of Staff or the Compensation Groups and Pay Ranges. The COS, we want to remain in Compensation Group 21 with the range of 18. And if you, that range is between roughly $103,000 to $139,000. The Community Engagement Specialist, we're recommending that it be a Compensation Group 18, Range 8, which is roughly, or just about $66,000 to $78,000 range. We had, Tori did, Tori Larson from the HR Department did an amazing, amazing job working with us. And she did a lot of research to find out kind of where other cities that are kind of comparable to Madison have positions like these. And that's how we got to these particular pay ranges, Compensation Groups and ranges. So we talked a lot about what we wanted to do in terms of training and experience. And given the conversation that we had with, just now about Res J analysis, being very cognizant of not, or thinking about alternative forms of training or experience that might not just be like, well, they went to college for communications and then served as, you know, this person for, or this particular position for this person. So to go over what we are recommending for the Chief of Staff, we recommend that candidates have about four years of related experience in policy development and advocacy, including three years of being able to manage staff, as well as being able to and having experience to be able to oversee, you know, any development projects, implementation and administration of these particular legislation that the council may put forth, et cetera. When we were talking about like education, we did change some of that to have a bachelor's degree in Public Policy, Administration, Political Science, Ethnic/Gender Studies, Communication, Finance, Urban Studies, or another field that is kind of relevant. We talked a lot about, you know, what a liberal arts degree is and how it may, you know, there are many of those degrees that would fit into this. So it's not, this is not an exhaustive list. Of course, we'd be fine and be happy to have anyone who has master's degrees in those similar fields. But, you know, we also understand that this is not, we don't want, again, we don't want to eliminate people who have maybe had alternative tracks to where they are right now. We thought that that was important, especially given the rising costs of a college education and a college degree. And that we may, you know, especially in the future, see a lot more people applying for jobs with associate's degrees that have more professional experience, but may not have a bachelor's degree. So that's kind of our thinking for that particular position. As far as the Community Engagement Specialist goes, we recommended that they, the required experience consists of three or so years of community outreach experience and making sure that it's to a wide variety of audiences and not just, you know, a homogeneous group. Similar, similar kind of education requirements, which would be the bachelor's or master's in communications, public, community relations. I'm, I'm reading this part, journalism, political science, public administration or a similar field. And this is a position where an associate's degree may come into play far earlier than for a Chief of Staff. But associate's degrees in similar kind of communications fields, as well as folks that work with, have done, you know, volunteer work or work with other organizations in terms of community outreach. And especially for those that have to, or that have experience communicating with different audiences and different communities. So that is basically what we are recommending. I don't know if any of my other colleagues who are on this committee have more insight or more, more things that we should be sharing that I forgot. I'm not seeing hands go up. Oh, I don't think I see. Oh, no. It's just me. So, so that's, that's where we are. We started off this committee and it, and kind of rough and a lot of, not being sure what we all wanted to get out of this position. But by the time we got to the end of the process, we ended up coming together on a lot of the things that we have put into these recommendations. And when we were going through them, ultimately, they ended up being unanimous. So these recommendations do have support, broad support from the community member or the committee members. So I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I think so we have a question or comment, Alder.
Thank you. Well, I think both of the positions sound great. I like what you shared and I, I thought everything in the position descriptions and in like the justification letter that was in the attachment sounded good. I guess my only questions at the moment are, one, what would be the optimal timeline for hiring these? And then two, have you thought or have you begun to think through the onboarding for the Chief of Staff position? I'm just wondering, I mean, they're going to be doing all kinds of different things. It's going to take, it's going to be challenging to hit the ground running. it's going to be challenging to hit the ground running with all of the, the things that are expected of the person in that role. And I, I know the, the staff in the Common Council Office already have uh overflowing plates. So um the, I imagine it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of us are going to have to pitch in for getting the, the Chief of Staff up to speed.
Yeah, so we didn't put together a timeline per se, um because we wanted to make sure that this was approved. Um but also during this process, we did work a lot with council staff to um make sure that we understood their roles in the office as well. So we have a fairly solid, um you know, uh compilation of who does what, you know, what responsibilities are where. Um and that, that is going to be a huge part of that training. Um is, is kind of how we, I, I don't want to say like cleaned up, but just clarified perhaps. Uh and made sure that we all, everybody on the committee understood, you know, what duties were um assigned to who, who handles what, um and, and making sure that those were up to date as well. Um especially because right now we have everybody, you know, kind of pitching in where they, they need to. And um it's, it's a little less defined. So that was a big part of this. And I imagine that this is the, this, the, the whole process, including training, is going to be um incumbent on council leadership to kind of get rolling on.
All right. Great. That's helpful. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Vice President Martin, for a, a comprehensive description and update. Really appreciate that. If there is no further question, we will move to agenda item number five. Under New Businesses Legislative File Number six seven nine two two, amending various sections of the, of the Madison, Madison General Ordinances to correct inconsistencies and improper references in Madison General Ordinances cons- uh constituting the twenty-twenty-one City Attorney Revisers Ordinance. Can I please have a motion?
I move recommending approval.
Can I have a second, please? Second by Alder Lema. Attorney has.
Yes, thank you, President Abbas. Um this is our annual revisers ordinance. Um the current ordinance has authorized the City Attorney's Office to present the reviser ordinance. Um and, and this is uh intended to correct errors that are in the existing ordinances. So in some cases, one ordinance may have changed and there's a citation to that in another ordinance and we just um did not catch that in the original drafting. Um and so I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about the specific ones in this ordinance. Uh another good example is this, the first one, which is a table in the zoning ordinances. There was a, there were permitted uses that were updated in the substantive ordinances. But they, that just did not get incorporated into this table. So that's another example of something that we try to correct during the year. We sort of keep track of these and then we present them all as uh, as one ordinance.
Thanks, Attorney Has. Any question for Attorney Has? I do not see any hand raised. With that, if there is no objection, can I count unanimous vote? All right. With that, I will consider as unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Attorney Has.
Thank you.
With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Second. Second by Aldo Lema. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.